Okay, welcome to all those that have joined us here in council chambers this evening, especially the scouts of Scout Troop 28. Appreciate you all being here. Called the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, October 26th. If you'll all please rise, I will lead you in the invocation and the scouts will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we've received in our city. Tonight, we gather in council chambers with heavy hearts for the loss of a child of our city. May Mackenzie Clark find the childhood with you that we wish she could have had and enjoyed with us. She never fully got to live that childhood. May the family of Lisa Ruby find peace with her loss. Help us to all learn from this loss. Tonight, I pray for strength for those who are ill, including the family of some of our city staff. Give them strength to recover and return to us. As always, Lord, thank you for what is right in our community and country. Let us, let our character be worthy of you. We ask these blessings in your son's name. Amen.
Mayor?
Yes.
City Council, before we start, I'd like to, it's my honor. My name's Paul Olson, one of the leaders with Boy Scout 28 for the adults here. I'm proud to present the scouts who are studying citizenship in the community merit badge. There's many requirements. One of them is to engage city leaders on issues that are important to them as scouts. And thank you, Mr. Wheeler, Mayor Hunt, for coming to our meeting last week and listening to the scouts' issues. Another requirement is to attend a civic meeting and understand the importance of being a citizenship, a citizen in the community. So, thank you very much. Scouts, hand over your hearts. Speak up, send us a question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well said. And before I open the audience for visitors, I will follow up on the comments of scout leaders. And Mr. Olson, thank you for being here with the scouts. I will tell everybody in this chamber that Randy and I, I think I would say that we got a good feeling from the youth in our community that they understand the issues. I was thrilled to answer some of the questions. As we expected, we would get a Walmart question. Got that. But what we also heard was questions about global warming, about government in general, about spending, about school spending. Really well thought out. And Randy, I think I can speak for Randy, we were thrilled to have that time to sit with you all and have that discussion. Really well thought out, well done, young men. So, appreciate that. With that said, we do have an audience for visitors this evening. I have three speakers that are signed up. And if you'll come to the podium here and we'll hear what you have to say, and we'll start with Mark Andrews.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, as always, as of late, I'd like to thank you once again for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Mark Andrews. I live at 7 Martha Court. During the past few weeks, various people have come before you to voice their concerns about what is being termed the Walmart Project, the legacy development, and various other concerns. A few of us have attended and spoken at these council meetings, as well as the EDA meeting and the planning commission meeting. I've sat through these meetings and listened to what the citizens have said. And then I listened to what various council members, board members, and commission members have said. I've been told the citizens of Pecosin shouldn't be concerned with what businesses locate at the gateway of our city because we have architectural standards that must be met. Then I drive by the new car wash and think, yeah, how are those standards working for you? In regard to the Walmart development, I was asked why I didn't get involved at the beginning. Well, how can I be aware of the happenings of the EDA when they have no set date, put their agenda out a week beforehand, when they have their meetings at 8:30 in the morning on a weekday, when they don't make their minutes available to the city website, and they don't televise their meetings? I've heard some say they can't, nor should they decide what business can and cannot come to Pecosin, that we in this country have a free-market enterprise system. On that, I say not necessarily true, especially when you are the overseers of our, the taxpayer's property. All retail leases have a non-compete clause in them. They say something to the effect that if I lease space from you in this strip mall, you have to guarantee me that you won't lease space to one of my competitors. To give a clearer picture of what I'm saying and to give an example, say you own a strip center and you happen to own a hair salon as well. Would you lease space to your competitor, another hair salon right next door to you? No, you wouldn't. The same logic applies when the city owns the property. You need to be extremely selective as to who you sell or lease to. Why? So you don't diminish the value of your own asset. Rather, you should be looking to everything you can to increase the value of that asset. In addition, and in the case whereby the city owns the property, the value of that asset is not only the actual ground, but is also the other existing businesses within the city. I have also heard how the city purchased the Big Woods property approximately 20 years ago, obviously under a different administration. This was the first mistake. No jurisdiction should ever attempt to speculate in real estate, mainly because you're risking taxpayer money. The second mistake was thinking the property would be marketable for R&amp;D or any other viable commercial employment center. You see, here's where the catch-22 is. Big commercial users require in-place infrastructure so their employees can get to and from work, but you can't improve the infrastructure without the commercial user. While at the EDA meeting, there was a discussion, or might I say confusion, as to the exact dates of various milestones regarding the CREST EG purchase agreement. The EDA was looking to the developer to supply that pertinent information. As someone who has been involved in the purchase and sale of real estate for development purposes, I was aghast when listening to the discussion. As a seller of property, how can you not know exactly when the milestone dates are? How can every member of the EDA not have readily available to them a calendar showing the exact dates of executions, expirations, options, closings, et cetera, when there's a considerable sum of money at risk to the city and its citizens? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have Gianna Andrews.
Hi, my name is Gianna Andrews. I live at 7 Martha Court. I apologize for the sunglasses, but I just had eye surgery and I still have stitches.
We appreciate your email.
But in spite of my eye surgery, I wanted to be here because it's so important to me. I wanted to talk about several things I've talked about before, just because I don't want them to be forgotten about. The first is my request that I made last week for the EDA meetings to be recorded and broadcast. And I know Mr. Wheeler has been in contact with Mr. Booth, the chairman of the EDA, and made him aware that citizens have requested that and that the city can provide that service if they request it. Again, I'd like to emphasize the fact that this is a board of non-elected members who are buying and selling taxpayer-owned property worth millions of dollars affecting really large-scale development in this city. The fact that the meetings are held at 8:30 a.m., are not recorded or broadcast, and the meeting minutes are not on the website yet, is the main reason citizens did not find out about this sale of the Big Wood properties to the Walmart developer prior to the rezoning requests that went on a public planning commission agenda, which was over a year later after the property was sold. It really is not surprising that we didn't know about it under those circumstances. I don't feel this should be an option for the EDA. It should be a requirement that their meetings are recorded, especially since they're here in city council chambers and the technology is easily available to do that. I don't know who the EDA is accountable to. I don't really understand that process. I know they're appointed, but I don't know where the checks and balances are and who assures that the appointed members on a board are doing the things correctly that they were appointed to do in a correct manner. And whoever that is, I don't know if it's you guys or citizens or who that is, I think should make an effort to make the recording of those meetings mandatory. And I feel so strongly about this request that I plan on being here at every city council meeting and every EDA meeting until it happens. Although, I know you've heard loud and clear that the citizens all want large-scale development over 15,000 square feet to have city council review and approval, I wanted to just say again how important I think that is to us. I'd like to thank you again for getting the ball rolling and having the planning commission work on the ordinance for that, and a draft ordinance is underway. And I look forward to attending that work session on November 16th to see how that comes about with the planning commission. I hope that since this ordinance has come about due directly because of citizen requests, and you have heard from citizens numerous times over the past few months and probably will continue to hear from us over the next few months about how we feel about that ordinance and how important we feel it is, that you will have all the information you need in order to vote on the ordinance the evening it's presented to you, hopefully, as Mr. Wheeler indicated that you would be able to vote on it that evening when it's presented. If not, and you feel there's something else you need to hear from us as citizens to know how we feel or how we would want you to vote on the ordinance, please let us know and we'll do our very best to make sure that you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Giglio?
Gillio.
I'm sorry, what's?
It's Gillio.
Gillio, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lynn Gillio. Like I said, I live at 124 Little Florida Road. And I have lived in Pecosin since 1975, before it became a city, when it was a town. And I've seen Pecosin change many, many times. And like a lot of these citizens, what I don't understand is, Pecosin is supposed to have that small community feel, like it always has. That's never going to change, no matter what you put in here. But what I don't understand is, I thought the job of city council was to look after the citizens of Pecosin. And I don't understand how developing a Walmart, a big community like that, would not hurt the city of Pecosin traffic-wise, store-wise. You know, I mean, if Walmart was going to do something for the city of Pecosin, but we know Walmart isn't looking out for the city of Pecosin, they're looking out for their own pockets. Y'all are the ones that are supposed to help us look out for the city of Pecosin. And Pecosin has a lot of issues, I mean important issues, that need to be addressed. Drugs, they've got so many issues. And so, I just want to understand why we would even consider developing a Walmart. How does that bring Pecosin together as a community, in any sense of the word? I mean, are they going to expand the road? They got two lanes out there. I mean, y'all see the traffic every single day. How would that change? I mean, how would you guarantee, it wouldn't close down Pecosin businesses. I mean, can you guarantee that? I mean, how would that not affect the city of Pecosin? I mean, when Walmart opens, it's not just open for Pecosin applicants, it's open for anybody that wants to come in. So, I just don't understand how we would even consider that. How would it really benefit the city of Pecosin, the residents that live here each and every day that have to deal with the traffic, the traffic accidents? I was on the sidewalk committee. That is something very crucial. We need that. A lady just died Saturday evening on Little Florida Road. There are so many accidents. It's been going on for years. And yet, important things like sidewalks, we don't even consider. But bringing in a business like Walmart to a small community, I just, I don't understand it. So, I hope you all take that into consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up? Second soccer game, right? Come right on. Come right on.
Did you win?
Yes, we did. Undefeated so far, yeah. Coach, you did. I'm not going to talk about Walmart. I think y'all know how I feel about Walmart at this point, but I do.
Amanda.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amanda Philbeck, 1 Huntshire Lane. I do want to talk about the legacy meeting that we had over 30 speakers come in. And I had mentioned the bald eagles, another threatened and endangered wildlife. And I know somebody in the city had said that there was no presence of endangered threatened species at that meeting, answering my question. And I just want to let y'all know and the city know that the Army Corps did find a threatened species. And it's on the Army Corps document, and the Army Corps is currently taking public comments. Y'all can comment too, since y'all are now aware of what's, there is a threatened species on there. The comment period ends November 1st. You can go online and Google Army Corps, Big Woods Development, or Legacy Development with Army Corps of Engineers, and make a public comment. Any citizen can do it, y'all can do it. Friends of citizens can do it. If anybody cares about the environment, can do it. And I really extend my hope that many people do. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Ends November 1st. Do it immediately.
All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes. Somebody prepared to make a motion?
I wasn't here to, Mr. Mayor, to ask me anything. Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution authorizing approval of the six minutes.
Okay, motion made. Second, that we approve the minutes of the regular session of October 13th, 2015. Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, we have three items on our new business this evening. The first is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with T.A.M. Consultants for Engineering and Construction Management Services for the Hazard Mitigation Grant for the elevation of the three homes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you will recall that we already have two separate grants that are underway for 10 and nine homes respectively. This is the final grant. It's a slightly different grant from the federal government for three homes. This grant varies from the other two, and that this particular grant is 100% federal-funded, assuming, of course, that the amount of the federal allocation is sufficient. What we've got before you, asking your approval on, is the contract for Combined Engineering and Construction Management Services. As you will recall, we have both an engineering firm and a separate construction management firm engaged on the first two grants. This group that we are recommending to you today is an organization that we've had some experience with in the past, good experience, but is not one of the contractors in the first two grants.
Okay.
And Theresa and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of council before I ask for a motion?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to move forward with this?
Mr. Mayor, I move a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with T.A.M. Associates Consultants Incorporated for Engineering and Construction Management Services for the Flood Mitigation Assistant Grant for the elevation of three homes.
Second? Motion made. Second, that we approve this contract and, what was the amount? The only question I have is the amount of the federal grant.
Oh, the total amount, Theresa, do you recall? Yeah. The whole grant?
Around $59,000.
Okay. So, the answer to that, just for those that are at home, is approximately $259,000.
Four hundred and fifty-nine.
Four hundred and fifty-nine. Sorry, I misheard you. And that was for the elevation of all, all the homes, right?
Three homes. To include the engineering. This contract, which is 53,000, is a part of that number.
Right, so it was all the, all the homes, not these three?
It's just these.
Otherwise, I'm going into the house.
It's just these three.
Yeah. Come up here, Theresa.
By the way, Mayor, it would be fantastic if you did go into the house financing business. One of the issues that we're dealing with in Hampton Roads generally is there is an abundance of federal grant money and a real shortage in firms that are qualified and available to do the work. And it has driven the cost up across the region.
Yeah, I'm just confused on the ordinance that I've got, which basically is 53,000.
Sir, this is the contract for the Engineering and Construction Management Services.
But not the raising.
Only. That's correct.
Thank you. That's what I was missing. Okay? I appreciate it. Sorry to make you come up for that. That was a part I was missing. Okay, motion made. Second, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, the next is, the next item on our new business is a resolution endorsing the placement of a no-wake sign in Roberts Creek.
Mayor, members of council, you will recall periodically over the last several years, you've received requests from residents living in the area of Roberts Creek for the city's endorsement of a no-wake sign. The reasons that they talk about include safety primarily of boaters, persons in the water, the depth, the nearness of the channel in some places. Should you approve this today, then you would be formally endorsing and asking the Department of Game and Island Fisheries to consider the request. They're the ones that actually approve this, yes or no?
Okay. Any, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to let you know that it has to be advertised twice that we are actually going to request this sign. So, there'll be two advertisements, and then we will forward it to the.
Okay, so this is just.
This authorizes us to do all of that.
To basically put the advertisement in.
Right.
So, the rest of the neighborhood can let us know what their thoughts are.
Sir, there hasn't been a petition or anything on this?
No.
We have had persons.
Yes, there were quite a few.
And speak to you about this. Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion to endorse this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I offer a resolution endorsing the placement of a no-wake sign in Roberts Creek.
Second.
Okay, motion made. Second, to endorse the call to start the process, is what I basically heard. Questions or comments?
Say that since I live at the mouth of that creek, I'm well aware of the problem it's generated somewhere.
Okay. Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, comments of the city manager.
We have one more item, sir. I'm sorry. Remote participation.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't skip through that. All right, we have one more item, and that's remote participation policy. And this is basically a mirror of that. And I guess what we ought to do is just read through this thing. If one of your staff members or whatever can just read it so everybody understands what it says.
I would be pleased to read it.
Okay.
The policy itself, which is the reference in the, in the ordinance, picking up from the first paragraph. A member of the city council may participate in a meeting of the city council through electronic communications from a remote location that is not open to the public, as provided for in Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3708.1, subject to the following requirements. One, there are five. Honored before the date of a meeting, council member wishing to participate from a remote location in a meeting of the city council shall notify the mayor or the city clerk, it's Mrs. Wiggins in this case, that the council member is unable to attend the meeting due to an emergency or a personal matter, and identify with specificity the nature of the emergency or personal matter, or notifying the mayor or the city clerk that the council member is unable to attend a meeting due to a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents the council member's physical attendance. Two, the city council should record in its minutes the specific nature of the emergency or personal matter or medical condition or disability, and the remote location from which the absent council member participated. If the absent council member's remote participation is disapproved because such participation would violate this policy, such disapproval shall be recorded in the city council minutes. Three, such participation by the absent council member shall be limited in each calendar year to two meetings, or 25% of the meetings of the city council, whichever is fewer. Four, a quorum of the city council must be physically assembled at the primary or central meeting location. And five, the city council shall make arrangements for the voice of the absent council member to be heard by all persons in attendance at the primary or central meeting location. And that is the policy, which is itself based on the policy in use by the York County Board of Supervisors.
Yep. Thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
Just a couple. Number one, this allows us to do that, but not requires us to do that.
Correct.
And the other thing is, should someone decide to do this, and then in the process of participating remotely, have a problem with the communication device, having bad reception or something, and not able to do that, okay, would that prohibit the voting process?
For that to the city.
They're participating, and they can't hear, and they can't get.
Then they can't vote for us, I'm concerned, because they don't know what they're voting on. Can't hear, can't participate, then they're not, they're not following the meeting.
I think the question is, if we lose them mid-meeting.
Then they're lost, and they still can't vote.
Then it's no different than somebody departing.
Right. No different than if one of the council members gets sick and decides to leave the meeting halfway through.
That's what I thought. I just want to make sure that that didn't void or anything.
Tie our hands.
Happen on that, yes. Okay, very good.
Thank you. All right, is there somebody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution adopting a remote participation policy.
Okay, motion made. Second, that we adopt this policy? Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, now, comments of the city manager, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one thing, well, two things, but they're both related this evening. With regard to the policy that you just passed, it's our intention at first to use the technology that we have to be able to do that. And if I could impose, perhaps, and Mrs. Crawford has actually followed us at home, we need to, we need to do a test of that technology. So, could we work with you to actually throw up something on TV, have you watch it at home, communicate back through here, and test everything?
Just a test.
Want me to not hear?
Yeah.
I mean, you want me to not be?
No, no, just, just a test.
To be at midnight tonight.
You could do it at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, that kind of.
Yes.
I'd just like to test the technology, since I know you watched us live streaming at home. I'm sorry if I was confusing.
Stay home next time.
Stay home next time.
Yes.
I apologize. That is not what I meant. And that's all I have, sir.
I like your thinking.
Certainly.
All right, Bud, what you got this evening?
Well, first off, I'd like to thank the people who came here tonight, participating in the meeting. Not quite as many as they had been, but I'm glad to see the ones that are here. And I would like to thank the scouts coming out tonight. We really enjoyed having you here tonight, and thank you for leading us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. And I'd like to extend my sympathy and condolences to the Clark family on the loss of their daughter. And just want to, I don't think, I have a granddaughter who's now participating, like, she's, she's gained an interest in participating in the government, and she watches it at home, watches that meeting from home, and she wanted me to say hi to her. And I don't think I'm allowed to say, hi, Caitlin, but anyway, just wanted to.
Of course she can.
Ms. Will Crawford.
I echo this sentiment, and I appreciate the Boy Scouts being here, too. I've always admired a man in uniform, so thank you for coming out. And also the condolences to the Snap family and the Rubio family for their loss this week. I, the, one other thing, I just wanted to say out loud, and I can explain it later outside of here if you'd like, but I, I just want everybody to hear it being said out loud. Not a single person from council or the EDA ever went out and asked for Walmart to come to Pecosin. I just want that to be said out loud, so you know it, and I can explain that later if you'd like. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Vernal.
This was probably addressed at the last meeting, and I was unable to attend, but
Not a single person from council or the EDA ever went out and asked for Walmart to come to Pecosin. I just want that to be said out loud, so you know it, and I can explain that later if you'd like. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Vernal?
This was probably addressed at the last meeting that I was unable to attend, but I certainly want to commend Public Works for the job that they did, particularly down on our end of the town and cleaning up after the storm, because the whole Pecosin shores area was pretty badly trashed up after the storm, and they did a marvelous job of cleaning that up and, and keeping after it, so it was well done. So certainly appreciate that effort from Public Works.
Thank you. Councilman Ayer?
Just once again, the scouts, I appreciate you guys being here, and again, condolences to those that lost family members this past week. Also, thank the speakers. Things you're saying are things we're thinking about. Constantly have the same concerns that you guys do. I had just had a 35-year high school reunion this past week, so I had a bunch of friends came in town, hadn't been here in a long time. Pretty amazed at the progress that's been taking place here. For the most part, all of them seem to like it. They saw the signs, and were concerned about that as well, they're a little town, given that they haven't been here probably in 30, 35 years, some of them. So everybody still cares about this town, don't care where they live, how long they've been gone, this is always home, and they care about it. The sidewalks are something that have always been a point of contention here. I had a girlfriend who was hit in high school in 10th grade on Hudgens Road. There's no sidewalks. These things haven't just happened, they've been happening. The sidewalks are something I'm hoping, grant money, we can find, or do something. There was a committee on it, and I've come out of the loop on all of that, but I'd like to get more involved with that, but whether we do it a section at a time, but it's easier said than done sometimes. You're talking about, it takes money, it's talking about taking people's property, and those are tough things to do, all of them. We, we need viable business to come here to help us with the revenue streams. We want a lot of things, and we need a lot of things, but it does take, we know what it takes, some grant money, or some taxpayer money, or a combination of the two. Everything everybody talks about, I assure you, everybody on this council, we're citizens, we have the same concerns, and I hear you loud and clear, we all hear you loud and clear. I've, I've learned that the wheels of government, whether it's local, state, or federal, turn slowly sometimes, unfortunately too slow. I thank y'all for being here.
Okay, I think y'all captured everything that I was going to say, and Councilman Vernal, I will tell you that not only did the, the Public Works clean up the city, I don't mind giving them one more kudo, they also prepared for the seafood festival in the same week. Tremendous, tremendous job by that group, but I've come to learn to expect nothing less than a great output from them, and I think we all have. I will say, and echoing the, the comments here, and I know it gets lost in the translation, that I think you've, you've got it exactly right, Councilwoman Crawford, the city doesn't go out and say, "Hey, come operate a business here." Bottom line is, people come to Pecosin because they're interested in the market, and if they're interested in the market, there may be others that are interested in the market. So never forget that. We don't go out and say, "Hey," my wife will be the first one to tell you, she asked for a Starbucks many years ago, and didn't get it, okay? It doesn't work that way. The second thing I would say is extending that, that comment on council to the EDA. I will tell everybody here that you don't, don't fix blame, fix the problem. If you're concerned about the Walmart or what the EDA did, then let them know that. I think you have. That doesn't mean that they're bad people, and I continually, I continue to hear that something's wrong with the way they operate. I will tell you, when I go through that board and I look at human factors of what fails, I don't see anything there that's, that's failing from the capabilities of the citizens. You're basically talking about your fellow citizens, so remember that, because they are your fellow citizens. I don't see any of them that are unfamiliar. I don't see any of them that are not qualified for the task.